I call to order the special meeting of the Glendale City Council for December 10th, 2019. May we have roll call?
Council members, Devine?
Here.
Barpedian?
Here.
Montero?
Here.
Agajanian?
Present.
Aaron Najarian?
Here. May we have your report?
The agenda for the December 10th, 2019, special public meeting of the city on Thursday, December 5th, 2019, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. For you is Director of Community Development regarding new 25-story Hotel General Office Tower Stage One Design Review, 135 through 190 West Glen Oaks Boulevard, portions of the public right-of-way at the southwest corner of West Glen Oaks Boulevard and North Brand Boulevard, and portions of 100 West Glen Oaks Boulevard. Wanting is a motion approving Stage One Design. And then there's a second item as well.
Okay. We'll take them one at a time. Ms. Beers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I'll go directly to Mr. Dennis Joe, who will take you through the presentation and answer any questions you may have. With that, Dennis?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Once again, this project is in regards to a Stage One Design Review application. Staff has prepared a PowerPoint presentation, so if I can kindly guide your eyes over to the projector, as I can continue on with the presentation. Once again, this is a conceptual design review application. The purpose of this is a conceptual project to be presented before City Council. The applicant requests for your feedback, comments, recommendation on only the project's conceptual mass and scale and site planning. During Stage Two and the final design review submittal, additional detail will be presented for you at that time, which includes like, for example, the environmental review, architectural details, the open space design, parking, amenities, and the associated parking studies. This project is in regards to a 25-story luxury high-rise hotel office tower. It includes 226 guest room keys. It will include a hotel-operated restaurant on the ground floor, a restaurant at the rooftop, and includes general offices, which will be hotel-operated as well as independent-operated offices. And also, it includes meeting spaces and a grand ballroom. Moving on to the project location, the project site is generally located north of the 134 freeway, and it's between North Central, West Glen Oaks Boulevard, and Brand Boulevard. It consists of three areas. The first one being shaded in green, which is the landscape right-of-way area. Shaded in blue, it's the cap parcels above the Verdugo Wash. And the yellow shaded areas, which is portions of the existing Hilton Hotel. The surrounding zonings of the subject property are C2 to the west, C2 and C3 to the north, C3 to the east, and DSP gateways to the south and the southeast. The portions, the landscape portions of the right-of-way, as well as the cap portions above the Verdugo Wash are currently undesignated on the city zoning and general plan maps. Continuing on project location, this slide here provides photographs of different vantage points of the project site. You may notice the photographs are colored and shaded in different colors, which correspond to the photograph key on the lower left-hand side in their arrows. So, starting with the, on the top left with the blue borders, this is a photograph taken from central on Glen Oaks, looking in the southeast direction. And then moving clockwise on this slide with the green border, this is looking southeast. And this is taken from Brand Boulevard and Glen Oaks. And finally, the last one is the photograph in yellow border. This is looking northwest, and this is looking, taken from Arden and Brand Boulevard. Just to give you some context of the project site, this is an aerial photograph of the project area. You may notice that the project site is shaded in yellow, and in the background, it has the DSP gateway area. The DSP gateway is exhibited with mostly the notable skyline of the downtown area. It's characterized by high-rise development. It's visible from various viewpoints within the city, as well as the 134 freeway. The gateway district allows the tallest buildings, as well as the most FAR by right. Tall buildings are encouraged generally in the gateway district. Moving on to site planning, the tower portion of the project will be located above the landscape right-of-way. As you can see, the outline of the tower outlined in orange, it follows the shape of the landscape right-of-way, which is constrained by the narrowness of this area. The project area is bisected by the Verdugo Wash, which is constraining the buildable area on the site. While the footprint of the building can't be constructed directly on top of the Verdugo Wash, portions of the building will be constructed and suspended over the Verdugo Wash, and then touching down on the other side of the Verdugo Wash in this area here of the hotel will be loading areas, back-of-house, and some meeting rooms. Moving on to the project's mass and scale, the project complies with key DSP standards, which includes adequate rooftop modulations, recessed ground levels. As you can see here on East Glen Oaks, the first and second level is pushed away subtly from the street. And along Brand, where the suspending portion of the building is over the wash, it's set-back and angle, which affords additional opportunities for additional landscaping on the ground floor, as well as additional unrequired open space underneath the suspending portions of the building. There's some architectural benefits to this also as well. It avoids an appearance of a large building wall, and adds a visual interest from Brand Boulevard as well. Continuing on, the elevation includes articulation, some framing elements, and modulation. It also includes a variety of vertical treatment, as shown here, which avoids a monotonous repetition of plate glass, which is generally applied on typical high-rise buildings. For high-rises in the DSP, the DSP includes standards that promote slender buildings, slender building profiles. And these standards include, one, a 20-foot setback of the upper-floor areas at and above the 60-foot plate height and level of the building. And number two, a 15% reduction of a plate area for portions of the building above the 200-foot area. And once again, the purpose of these standards is to promote a slender, high-rise building profile. And as you can see from this slide here of the east elevation, the project design is already, it already exists a thin and slender building profile, which is a result of unusual shape of a lot, and a limited buildable area constrained by the flood channel. So, looking at the east side of the building here, this width here is approximately 90 Under a typical, regular-shaped lot that doesn't have constraints, the building profile would approximately be 150 feet wide. So, you can see here, the area, it's, on this facade here, it's being pinched. Turning the building around, and this is from the west side, the widest portion of this facade here is approximately 40 feet. And once again, if you were to show the, if a profile of an unconstrained lot, you can see this side here is even pinched even further. Compliance to the DSP standards would reduce the building width from here, apologize, from 40 feet to 20 feet, which would be a detriment to the design of the building. And moving on to open space, the project has an excellent opportunity to implement meaningful, publicly-accessible open space. As you can see here on the top left-hand corner, this is, that corner there is from Glen Oaks Boulevard and Central. It's a pretty vast area, it's approximately 33,000 square feet. It will be accessible from both streets, and it'll be at the same level, at the street And on the opposite side of the lot, there's an approximately 6,000-square-foot area along Brand Boulevard, which will be open and accessible from Brand. However, approximately 4,000 square feet of that area will be covered by the suspending portions of the building. While that area can't be counted towards the required open space, required by the DSP, the project combined areas of open space is approximately 35,000 square feet. So, the DSP by today's standards for the existing Hilton Hotel, as well as the project, it would require approximately 17,000 square feet. This is almost double the amount that would be required. Moving on to site access, site access onto the site would be continued from the existing apron from Glen Oaks Boulevard. You can see here, this is just kind of the wheel tracks of guest drop-off or conference drop-offs, and loading operations would be taken from Arden, as shown in red tracks. The project proposes to locate all of its required parking within the existing Hilton's subterranean garage. Access into the subterranean garage will remain from East Glen Oaks, and secondary access will remain from Arden. And once again, this is a conceptual design review. The applicant's requesting for your feedback, your comments, recommendations, only on the project's conceptual mass and scale and site planning. The applicant's next step is to listen and consider to your feedback, your recommendations, and prepare a final design package submittal, as well as the associated applications. The council has the option to pass a motion with recommendations, recommended by staff, or amended recommendations of your own choosing, or even just to read into record and just vocalize what your recommendations and conditions, or, I'm sorry, your recommendation or comments are on the project. This project also includes a purchase-sale agreement, which I'd like to invite Jennifer Hiramoto from our Economic Development Division to talk about this piece.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you, Mr. Joe. As mentioned, as part of this project, there will need to be a purchase-sale agreement. While the agreement or those terms are not being presented to you today for approval, it will be an important part of the project. The terms would still need to be negotiated, and council will be asked at a future meeting to make that recommendation. Just for the purpose of the conversation, the agency-owned properties that would be included in this agreement are depicted above. It is the Verdugo Wash, which is comprised of 14 parcels, roughly 68,000 square feet, and the landscape public right-of-way, which is about 18,000 square feet.
Sorry, one more question.
Yes, sir.
Is it part of our package?
Yes, sir. So, the area in blue, the Verdugo Wash, that's comprised of 14 parcels, and is roughly 68,000 square feet. And the area in green is the landscape public right-of-way between Glen Oaks and Verdugo, and that's roughly 18,000 square feet. This site does have a complex history, which is part of the reason we wanted to call this to your attention today. So, since the hotel was built, there has been some relationship with these properties. So, I'll just go through that, bear with me. But since September 1988, the Glendale Redevelopment Agency entered into a disposition and development agreement for the Red Lion Hotel, currently the Hilton. As part of its obligations, the GRA was responsible for that land assemblage. In April of 90, the GRA acquired the Verdugo Wash from the Los Angeles County Flood District, and subsequently obtained the necessary permits to build the Verdugo Wash cap. In July of 1990, the city transferred all of its interests in the Hilton site to the former redevelopment agency. This included all of the unimproved public right-of-way between the Verdugo Wash and Glen Oaks Boulevard from Central Avenue to Brand Boulevard, acquired by the city back in 1941. The GRA completed the Verdugo Wash cap and associated landscaping improvements, including the right-of-way areas north of the Wash, and the hotel constructed the driveway connecting the hotel to Glen Oaks Boulevard. The GRA subsequently granted an easement to the hotel to this area. Today, the hotel is responsible for the operation, maintenance, and repair, replacement of the Verdugo Wash deck, the access road, and all the sidewalks, landscaping and plazas, and other common areas within the easement. In addition, with some limitations, the hotel agreed to provide public access and use of these easement areas. The hotel also granted the right to set reasonable hours of public access and other rights of control. The hotel was further granted utility easements and exclusive easement for the vehicular use of access road. So, we've definitely had a relationship with the hotel for this property since that time. But this complex property and the history continues. If you recall, in 2011, the state of California eliminated all redevelopment agencies across the state. So, in compliance with this new state mandate and the Dissolution Act, the GRA was dissolved, and the successor agency was formed to weigh down all of our assets. As part of these efforts, properties that were owned by the Glendale Redevelopment Agency were transferred to the agency, the successor agency, and they're, the responsibility of that agency is really to expeditiously maximize value of those properties. The Dissolution Act required the agency to submit a long-range management plan to the State Department of Finance that listed the GRA-owned real property and their proposed disposition and use. This was submitted and approved by the Oversight Board and Department of Finance in 2014. This authorized the agency to dispose of all properties and to take actions necessary for the disposition. However, when this plan was prepared, the Verdugo Wash and Glen Oaks were not included. It was simply, they were inadvertently left out. The successor agency is precluded from amending this plan, but steps will still need to be taken to ensure compliance with the Dissolution Act. I've mentioned that we are obligated to sell the property expeditiously in a manner that maximizes value. Part of the city's responsibility to comply with the Dissolution Act is that properties must be sold for fair market value, and all sales must be approved by the now Regional Oversight Board. So, whether you are going to consider selling the property today, or at some point to this potential applicant, or to some other applicant, the property would still need to be considered to be sold at a fair market value, as laid out by the Dissolution Act. This project, however, as presented, represents an opportunity for us to dispose of these assets in a manner that does both of those, that maximizes their value and economic impact through negotiated sale to the adjacent property owner. I'll also mention that any sale that would move forward, it would be transferred to the county for the distribution, any proceeds would be transferred to the county for distribution amongst the taxing entities, and the city would receive 13.57% of that total sale. 13.57%.
Yes, Ms. Regid?
Yes, sir.
What's the reason we get 13.57% of the proceeds?
So, I'm looking over to our attorney, Philip Landsafame.
Could you repeat the question?
What's the reason that City of Glendale will receive 13.57% of any sale proceeds?
So, what, I'll try and cut to the chase.
Things are not fair, that's why.
That is the city's percentage of property tax for general property tax that we receive. So, what happens is, all of the agency's property gets sold, and then it's divided amongst all of the taxing entities. So, if you get a dollar for this property, Glendale gets 13 and 1/2 cents, the county gets 50 cents, the school district gets 25 cents. You get $2, then, you know, you just multiply that. But that's based on our general receipt of property tax, the percentage we receive. And again, that's a long story why we get so little. Burbank and Pasadena are 21%, 18%. Because back in 1978, when Proposition 13 passed, Glendale was a very fiscally conservative community, very strong community fiscally, and didn't have as much tax on property as the other cities. When Proposition 13 came along, they said, "That's your new rate." And that's what we've been left with. Doesn't sound fair, does it?
No, hold on. You are, I know what you're talking about, but you're selling a property, right? That property belongs to City of Glendale.
No.
No.
It's the redevelopment agency.
So, because they moved redevelopment agencies, everything went to the state now?
What they, what the law said was, all of the properties that are owned by redevelopment agencies must be sold, maximizing their value, and distributed amongst all the taxing entities at their designated rate. For Glendale, that's 13 and 1/2 cents.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a sad story.
Mm-hmm.
Very sad story.
It is. It's worse when we have, when the city buys property from the agency. We, Glendale, wind up paying for it twice. But that's the way that the dissolution law was set up.
But I won't leave you on a sad note. So, as the City Council weighs its options on whether to enter into a purchase-sale agreement in the future, and today, potentially moving forward with a Stage One conceptual design, there are several economic development benefits for you to keep in mind. The first is the amenities that it would provide north of the 134 freeway. The economic development team has reached out several times over the past few years with some of the employers north of the 134 freeway, and anybody that has ever been out there at lunch has watched some of those patrons in those tall office towers as they, where they go to lunch. They are walking across to Central Grill, to Trader Joe's, to Coffee Bean. We've heard from them, it's very difficult for them to move their car from the garage, drive down Brand, park again, have lunch, come back, and make it within an hour lunch. With this project, there will be a lounge and a restaurant on the ground floor, in addition to a luxury dining experience on the top floor. So, this is providing more amenities. A second benefit, of course, is more conference room space. We continue to hear that there just needs to be more of that, and this is offering up 15,000 square feet. At the Hilton right now, there's about 19,000 square feet. At Embassy Suites, it's 6,600 square feet. So, we are continuing to offer yet another amenity to folks who want to have more conferences here. The third is job creation. In addition to the potential jobs the hotel will create, which is estimated to be about 300, the developer is proposing moving their corporate offices from Arcadia to this location in Glendale, and that represents about 30 jobs. And finally, this fills the need for a luxury hotel. So, you recall, about a year ago, we completed a hotel analysis and found that, that there is a gap in our market of either extended-stay hotels and luxury hotels, and that the study further went on to say that a luxury hotel would be difficult for us to come by without a significant subsidy. This developer is getting us pretty close to achieving what even the hotel study would be difficult to achieve without having a significant subsidy. And, oh, pardon me. This is just a breakdown of some of the hotels, the brand hotels that are currently in downtown that are coming soon, and of course, this proposed project, which is at 226 keys. As our market braces for an increase in tourism with large-scale events like the Olympics, and we already have a very strong corporate office market at our hotels, this project is poised to capture this market. And you'll hear from the applicant later on the hotel market. A final component on this, or just some of the other fiscal impacts, the applicant can go into more details on the actual numbers of this, should you wish to hear those, but long-term, this represents an increase in property tax, city fees, sales tax, and transit occupancy tax. And of course, this is in addition to the, that 13.57% proceed that you would get. And finally, there is no fiscal impact today associated with the consideration of the Stage One Design Submission. This concludes staff's portion of the presentation, and now, if the council is, doesn't have any questions, I'd like to invite the applicant to the podium, so he can further describe his project. It's Mr. John Hicks, he's the project manager with the developer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Hicks?
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. My name is John Hicks with Camp Hang, I represent Camp Hang Company as a project manager. I've been with the company for 16 years. Camp Hang Company as a whole has been developing for 40 years now, and look forward to the future. As we, the planning department has already discussed, what we're looking at is a 226-key high-rise hotel to 25 stories. And the presented hotel will be a luxury product. I have our, one of our owners and our president of land acquisition, they can discuss some of the brands, if that comes into question. But we are looking for this to be developed as a luxury product. Starting out with the, when we first initiated conversation and discussions with the planning department, the intent was to come in with a luxury product, and then we started discussing some of the amenities and the ideas of what they, we expected for a luxury brand. One of the keys, as mentioned earlier, was a need for some sort of restaurant or dining experience to be placed within this area, for the local businesses and residents to actually come and occupy. We first achieved that with our site plan by including an area of a lounge in the left-hand corner. Through the center of the ground-floor plan, we have our lobby, and then to the right, we do actually have what would be considered a three-meal restaurant potentially, so that being able to serve breakfast, lunch, and a dinner experience. A little bit more upscale with the brands that we would be looking at, but a really nice dining experience for guests, residents to experience. As far as servicing, what happens is, we actually, from the east to west, the, most of the hotel tower actually fronts Glen Oaks. But then to service the hotel, given the restrictions that were applied to the site, we actually look to Arden Street for servicing the hotel, and that's where you're looking at, we actually will be abutting the existing meeting space of the Hilton Hotel with our proposed service core. The service core will be constructed of multi-levels. The first three levels of the hotel that you see every time we flip to this will be a section just to service the hotel. So, temporary food storage, servicing of vehicles, semi-trucks, that type of thing to pull in, offload, and then depart on Arden, back onto either Brand or Central Avenue. The second level, which we were referring to as 2A, is actually where we see our first level of office space that we were proposing, being a mixed-use tower. And that is roughly 9,000 square feet with a floor plate area, and will serve both hotel office space, as well as general office. Again, this is just a continuation. 3A, we have a second level, identical to the second-level plate of office, serving the same purposes, general office, and then office required to service the hotel. The Level Four, Level 4A, is where we first encounter our meeting space. So, it will be an elevated meeting space, which will be fronting either Brand Boulevard, as well as Glen Oaks. Everything that is actually interior to the site will serve as a pre-function to service that hotel, and get yes and functions into the space. Where you see the lobby, we basically have a six-elevator core that abuts those two things that are adjacent to the lobby, and then some back-of-house support services. Again, we're just at Level Four, so we still have support services for the hotel that'll anchor up, and when I show you, there'll be a video that I'll show you that will put this all together. Coming up to 5A, again, an extension, typically, meeting rooms and ballroom space for these types of hotels have larger plates. So, we have a ballroom that we're getting ready to engage in, and then we have a second level of meeting space that can transition, some of the spaces can transition to two levels, stay focused on the single level if required for a lower meeting space. And then you see our first engagement of our grand ballroom, which we're looking at approximately 6,000 square feet for a, for the major ballroom, which is divisible into three spaces, or smaller salons. Each one of these are intended to be able to expand and contract based on the need for a total of roughly 12,000 square feet of meeting room, ballroom square, ballroom space between two levels. Once we get to Level Six, we actually start turning to the guest experience, where we have, in a luxury band, there's several amenities that we will have to bring to the tower, I mean, to the property, such as spa facilities, a concierge level, and those have criterias right now for the massing. We identify the space, because depending on the brand that we select, depends on how this amenities pie gets split up. But then really, what you're looking at is our first level of guest rooms, with the smallest guest room coming in at 445 square feet, that'll be a standard guest room size, and then they go up to, from this level, we actually start our first two-bay, which is roughly 990 square feet for a two-bay suite. And then, a majority of the corridor is actually just single-loaded, given the restrictions of the site, forcing us to go a little bit higher. What you see down now, though, is that the lower, lower right corner is intended to be a rooftop-style of garden experience, almost, it'll be elevated roughly, by the time we get to Level Six, we're somewhere around 60 feet above. Instead of having a bunch of mechanical equipment... Instead of having a bunch of mechanical equipment and utility equipment on this roof, we're actually preserving that for one of the mezzanine level in the hotel, which allows us to open up this roof plate so that this way we can have either an outdoor function on, you know, when we have great, most of the time it's pretty nice outside, even with the rain, the temperature wasn't all that bad. So we're able to capitalize and take advantage of doing outdoor functions, weddings potentially, whatever you can imagine, the ability to do that indoors or outdoors, which is challenging sometimes when you do high-rise projects like this, but we're able to capitalize on that. And so that'll be actually planted, it'll be sliced up between combination of upscale hardscape and landscape, ground cover, that type of thing. So this will, we have a nice inviting environment. From level seven through 20, we continue the guest rooms, but then you start seeing more breakup of the floor plate, few more of the, as you get higher in the hotel, seven through 22, you still have your standard guest rooms, but we start incorporating larger guest week experience. And we start slicing that up. But from seven to 22 will be entirely made up of guest rooms. We get to levels 21 to 22. Again, the number of demising walls diminishes and the room experience gets a little bit more grander, two bay, three bay suites, depending on the brand demand. And then, again, depending on the makeup of the project or the scope, just larger style of suites. And then we get to level 23. Level 23 was really interesting because now we have what we're, right now programmatically, we're just accounting for them. We have what is the executive level slash concierge level. Up here, you can foresee a private experience for a guest to sit there and partake in a drink, lounge, overlook the view of the city, looking towards the south. And through the right is where we really get to take most advantage of that view in addition to the guest rooms getting spectacular views all the way around. At 80% of this tower size, I mean, the tower mass, we have a luxury dining experience that we will incorporate on this, this level. So we're at level 23, it'll be the first level of the dining experience with the opportunity to dine interior and exterior on a spacious rooftop dining experience, which is in the pochette pattern. We lost our pool level. Okay, so we'll just go to the roof. So on the pool level, what you would have seen was a second level, which will serve as dining slash lounge, that will serve as the pool and the lower dining level as well as this pool deck. So underneath that roof elevation, if we were to go to the first rectangle at the far left, working our way to the trapezoid towards the center of the screen, that is men's and women's facilities. But then everything else underneath that dark charcoal gray is combination dining lounge upscale to support the five star program or the luxury program for a hotel of a luxury caliber. And then I have a, is there a? So to put all this two dimensional work in, we went ahead and completed a massing model. And it's a little bit of a flyby, it kind of circles around the hotel. I apologize for it being so dark, but really what you're looking at is brand. And then we're sweeping around Glen Oaks in a continuous loop. And it kind of gives you an idea of what we're looking at. We originally envisioned this tower, given the size, the scale, was always to focus on keeping the profile as thin as possible and the structure as light as possible. So you see varying projections to break up the tower mass and but at the same time, anywhere there is glass, as opposed to relying on spaniel glass, we're looking more of a floor to ceiling style transparent glass to where it really limits that profile and keeps it much lighter, you're seeing much deeper into the building, especially when it comes to the ground floor. So as we do this loop around, you can see the roof deck that we're talking about, the rooftop dining experience, and then you get an idea of our pool area. The roof will have several facets. We want people to be able to experience the skyline as well as the sky either by day or night, once you're on top of this roof plan. So there's a series of skylights and portals that are cut through. So when you're standing in there, you're really experiencing the city 360 degrees for a full wraparound. And then we're looking at combination of materials to help further break down the structure itself. You see the red elements, the red elements. Right now, we were asked to propose some materials, potential metal cladding. And then the concrete, we're looking at the, you know, exposed concrete, painted concrete, but the structure will be predominantly concrete. So we'd like to be able to accentuate that and use it as a tool to accentuate the design. With that, that concludes the presentation. If you have any questions, we'd like to see additional.
Thank you. Questions?
One more time.
Yeah.
One more time around the block, party.
And some of the rectangular shapes that you see that are used as breaking up, that's actually vital infrastructure to the hotel egress, predominantly staircases. So we're able to utilize those into design to help further break down the typical high rise that you would see. Also, we have incorporated balconies that you can step off to, everything, you know, with glass, guardrails that we're looking at minimum of 60 inches high. So this way, you know, we actually go a little bit higher as you go in high rises. So glass guardrails will segregate the tower from these guard, from the balconies. And as you see, we are proposing landscape on each deck element. So the dining, outdoor dining, will soften the environment by putting trees and landscape. The pool area, we will have landscape on top of there to help soften that environment even further. And then, of course, down on the grade level, the area we were talking about will be more of a rooftop garden. And as you sweep around, you can see some of the, some of the glass has been pushed further back in the hotel, some of it's more proud to the hotel. So there's a lot of movement in the elevation, but using similar materials. So this way we don't clutter up the elevations.
Thank you. Are there questions? Mr. Carpet?
Yes, thank you. I just want to understand it correctly. So we have a ballroom of 6,600 square feet and we have a meeting room?
Correct.
Of another 6,600 square, on one floor. And I'm trying to find my, you know, I dropped all my paperwork.
Yes, we have, we've actually divided the, right now, what we're proposing is for this level of hotel, being in the luxury hotel, there's a certain amount of meeting room and ballroom space that we will need to provide. And what we're doing, since this is such a narrow plate, we are dividing that up or spreading it over three levels of the tower itself. Plus, we're actually spanning the verdugo wash, which is a 90-foot span. So we will have a 90-foot span between our service core and the hotel tower itself. Be pretty spectacular. And then, of course, the ballroom where your traditional ballrooms, we've seen with this product, we've seen the brands change their ideology before you go into a ballroom surrounded by four walls, no view to the exterior. This ballroom will actually look out to Brand Boulevard. So one wall will be glass surrounded by three sides of meeting room and ballroom space. And then we accommodate, anybody that needs it, we use blackout shades to roll those down to create a dark environment for video presentations.
So the meeting room is on fifth floor, level five, 6,615 square feet, and the ballroom is on?
Level five.
Level five.
And then 5A, we have a transition. And then level six.
Do you know what is the width of the ballroom?
Minimum of about 40 feet wide.
The ballroom is 40 feet wide?
Right.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And as far as the branding goes, one last question.
Uh, branding, Phil, do you want to address branding, please? I'll turn it over to Mr. Wolfgram. He's our president of land acquisition for Camp Sand Company.
Good afternoon. My name is Phil Wolfgram. The reason why we even approached this project is brands. The luxury brands of the Marriott family and the Hilton family did approach us and ask us to see if there's anything that we can bring to this area in between LA and Burbank that's luxury wide. So Tiffany can talk about the brands, but we're talking Edition, La Meridian, of those type of, of luxury brands that we would be bringing. So we're still in talks with the, with the brands, haven't decided on which brand it would be.
Mr. Quinter?
Okay, I have a number of questions, as long as you brought up brands, we'll start with that. I mean, is it feasible that you would have a Hilton product next to a Marriott product? Or would you try to consolidate so you have one?
It is, to answer your question. The luxury brands are actually complementary to the Hilton brand is a three star plus hotel. And, and luxury brands are obviously four, five stars. And it doesn't really matter whether it's in the same family, Waldorf, Astoria, for example, or whether it's the Marriott, Rich Carlton, or Edition, as we discussed, because the different, two different types of consumers will, will buy those products. And so it doesn't really matter which family it would be. In our estimation, it's probably better to have a different brand than Hilton because they will have to compete with each other on, in their.
So operationally, even though you'll be sharing parking and valet services and so forth, you think since you're the management group, you could work through that and not have any?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a number of, let me start with a comment. I think that there'll be major opposition to this development unless something is done to address the traffic on Glen Oaks and on Brand. And specifically that right turn, which if we go there this afternoon, it's four o'clock, a little bit early, but real soon, it's going to be bumper to bumper heading east on Glen Oaks. And to say nothing of when you attend an event, getting out of the Hilton is very difficult. A lot of people, including some people in this room, I notice park on Brand north of Glen Oaks and just walk across the street because they know they can get to the event much quicker than going into the. So I would like the city and developer, when the traffic study is done, working with the traffic engineer, in my estimation, and I'm not a traffic engineer, we need a dedicated right turn lane, starting basically at Central, but for sure at the Hilton entrance and to be able to turn right. And then continue down Brand all the way to the freeway, because that's an undeterminate, there are people switching lanes, a lot of people wanting to go east on the 134. I think that needs to be addressed. One, to make it excellent for the people that go to the events and not have to worry about getting out. And two, because of the opposition from Glendale residents, they're going to be very unhappy with this project and the kind of traffic that, that it could, that it could develop. And I don't think, I think there's enough space. I don't think it's anything that's going to be particularly different to, to deal with. In terms of the meeting rooms, both the, the two 9,000 square feet meeting rooms, off the top of your head, do you have some idea of what that means in terms of people in a 9,000 square foot space? How many people would you normally be able to get in there?
Roughly about 800.
So 800 in both?
For between, between all the meeting space for this particular property, if we were to max out the meeting space, completely max it out, classroom style, we're looking at about 800.
And what does a Hilton hold in terms of their meeting space?
I don't know what's off my head, but 15,000 square feet.
14,000 square feet.
A thousand.
A thousand.
About a thousand, okay. Now, the western portion of this land, even though we're selling it, that stays as park space?
Correct. In the, in the design, what we will do is re-envision the existing landscape area and introduce a new, more modern version.
Yeah, hardly anyone knows it's a public park.
We hope to rectify that, actually.
So those are the only questions I have. Let me say, you know, I'm always impressed with architects because you take a very difficult parcel and they manage to make something out of it. And this architect, I think, has done a wonderful job of taking a very difficult parcel. And the application with the overhead, being able to look into the site, I think it's an excellent design. You have a long way to go, obviously, but I think at first blush, it's an excellent design that I think is going to be very attractive and will be an icon for the city of Glendale. And hopefully everyone will be able to get in and out of the project in a timely manner. That's the one thing that has me very, very concerned. If it's not done properly, I think it's going to be a real issue. But anyway, I'm very pleased with, with this proposal and.
Thank you. Ms. Divya?
No, Mr. Ragajanian.
I have problem with the, to enter from Glen Oaks, I mean, there was question when you get out, but to enter Glen, from Glen Oaks to this two giant hotels, it's going to be such a mess, in my opinion. Because the way it has been presented here, the entrance practically is whatever we have now. And already with Hilton, we have problem with that entrance of this place. And now you have another hotel right there. And to get into this hotel, it's going to be, you have to think more about it, how to handle the entrance.
Agreed.
Because I don't see you have changed anything. Actually, this is the same entrance as it is now, the way it shows in the drawings. Am I right?
Correct. That is correct.
I think that's been changed.
As far as, as far as entrance of the hotel.
Yeah.
You are correct. We are utilizing the existing apron as designed currently. We are utilizing the existing apron. It seemed to be the most plausible and feasible location. The other interesting thing about five star or luxury brand hotel, when you're looking at a luxury brand hotel, that is a valet hotel. So there's an uptick of attendance that take care of managing the vehicles. We, in some of the brands that we were looking at, we actually passed the massing concept before we even started programming it over to them and said, what do you think? And based on, one, as, as a developer who has been in the developing business for 40 years, we specialize in hospitality. We have luxury product, anywhere from three star to luxury product already in our portfolio. So we have a firsthand experience on each one of those brands to look at how to manage vehicles. And then plus, there are people much smarter than I am that deal specifically with traffic and the movement of traffic. And we have actually engaged a engineer to actually look at traffic, the flow of traffic and parking study.
I'm still worried about that the distance between Glen Oaks to when you enter that area, I don't know if you have the drawings here, is such a small distance. I'm imagining that Hilton, there is a, Hilton has this giant ballroom. So there are approximately 500 cars will enter because that's like 1,000 capacity ballroom in Hilton. So 500 car at least will come, if not more.
Potentially, there's a potential. And, you know, when you look at that, that's why we rely on, when we do, when we do the hotels, we have management companies, and the management companies work to train staff. And so when they do that, there will be compromise between the two properties. That's why we like the campus environment, because they can, actually, it could probably, there's a potential of even working more efficiently because they share the same campus. We have an opportunity to share resources potentially to get cars in the garage in a timely fashion. So, and even then, you know, hospitality in nature, there's, I won't say it never happens, but it's extremely rare that that rush of vehicles, and especially even today, it's even been more diluted with, you know, things like Uber, Lyft, transit systems are getting better. And what we're seeing is actually a decrease in, in vehicles and the people, the number of trip travels actually come into a hotel. And then, you know, you have some guests that'll arrive the night before an event, some guests that will arrive same day on an event, but typically it would be more of a. of a managing on the exit side of making sure that people don't have to wait too long. And so, with us having the experience in a luxury, a three-star-plus hotel experience, the last thing we ever want to see, because we actually get to see all the reports, is that there is a guest that had to wait what it would be an unjust amount of time. So, we have an accountability to the brand. The brand will hold the staff accountable to make sure that that experience is going to be delivered, that is expected of whatever brand we decide to land on. And that proves for the Hilton as well.
This is too early. Just bring it to your attention, because sometimes they go too far, and it's hard to go back and change it. Because I'm a professional engineer, I know how these things works. But this, you are showing one lane to enter to this giant complex. How you can do that?
Well, like I said, there are people much smarter than I am, that being the traffic engineers. They spend their entire careers learning how to manage vehicles.
One lane to enter to that site.
Right. Well, this is for massing of the tower. So, what'll happen is, is that as our engineering and parking engineers come onboard for, you know, what we have to answer, they will be the ones that will actually tell us, "You can do it. You need a dedicated lane, potentially." They will actually give us the formula of what we need to do to actually accommodate. If it means widening of an entrance lane or an exit lane, we won't jeopardize a guest experience, to say that we'll keep it that one lane. We will accommodate whatever the traffic study yields.
Thank you. I did have one more, not a question, and I know we're talking about the, basically, design. But I sure hope you will continue your unionized hotel. I think that's important to the city of Glendale, so the employees that unite, Local 11, that have served this hotel for many, many years, I hope they are also going to be working on this five-star.
That's the, that's to the gentlemen that are much smarter than I am, I present designs.
Right. Well, you know, I just hope that you bring that back to corporate, because it's a very serious issue in the city of Glendale. It is for me, and in the event that it doesn't happen, I think it's going to be a real problem for you as you go through the development stages, so.
I will take that back to executive management.
Mr. Devine?
Well, I was going to say, there are, I have two issues with this development, but now I have three. The exit, the entrance into the hotel and the traffic is definitely going to be a problem. But, you know, we just recently, the council just recently approved a downtown-specific plan standards for development. And you want to take this zone into the downtown-specific-plan zone, and it seems like a contradiction, because we just passed, approved these standards. We move you in, and the first thing that happens is you're asking for a change in those, in those standards. So, the setbacks, there is no setback, it's not the setback that was approved, and then we have the parking exception. I have a problem with the traffic, and I also have a problem with the parking. I don't know if you can redesign this project. I think it's a beautiful building, it's a beautiful design, I have no problem with that. But I think parking is going to be a nightmare. You mentioned that there would be 800 occupants in the new, or possible, 800 occupants in the new hotel, and possible 1,000 in the existing hotel. And if that all comes together, and we have 2,000 people looking, well, not, won't be that many cars, but you'll have that many cars looking for a parking space. Where are they going to go? Now, I know we're here for design, but as far as I'm concerned, that's part of the design. I mean, it's not just how the building looks, it's how it functions, and how well it, you know, everything works in the area for, not only for the people that are, that are going to the hotel, but also for the residents that live here.
Correct.
And I just don't know where that parking, so I have to see a design that makes that possible. One thing I want, did want to say is, the passeo that you have designed between Brand and Central is absolutely fantastic, and I'm sorry you didn't explain that a little bit more, but it's terrific. But anyway, those are my, my issues. I, too, am interested in making sure, as Mr. Quintero has mentioned, that Unite be included in the jobs. Let's see, setback parking, I'm looking at my notes. Oh, I wanted to ask Mr. Joe, and maybe, or maybe you're the architect, you can answer me this question. He mentioned something about a 40-foot or a 20-foot width.
Yes, he was talking about?
Yes, and he said that, what, if we increase, if we decrease it, it would be a detriment to the design.
Correct.
What does that mean?
So, what is, what's happening is, is that we did review the DSP, the new DSP, and the one thing that we were, given the site constraints, this is an extremely narrow site, and we're putting a luxury hotel in it, there's criteria for square footage. So, my understanding of the DSP was to make sure that, you know, high-rise buildings keep as narrow-profile as possible. And I believe that in our design, we were able to achieve that by, due to the constraints, in that by the time you rise up the tower, where, if I was to do a double-loaded corridor, I'd have a tower width that would be roughly some, well over 100 feet worth of width in that east-to-west direction. In other words, running along Glen Oaks.
Is that the one where it's 90 feet, or is that the one?
Well, you start on Brand Boulevard, we start out at 90 feet.
Right.
And then, as you work west, towards Central Avenue, the tower steps back. So, it progressively gets narrower to the point where we're down to 40, almost 46 feet, right around 46 feet, to the furthest western elevation. So, the tower continually to, continues to erode, due to, I can't bear down on the Verdugo Wash, it's nonpermissible. So, the, the site restraints allowed us to achieve what is going to be the narrowest tower that is actually in the city of Glendale, possibly LA, when you look at it from a high-rise building. It's extremely narrow, to the point where, you know, it was reviewed for compliance with the building code.
Well, let me ask you, if, if we send this back for redesign, is there, do you see a way of putting any kind of parking in this structure or in this area?
This, okay, so, basically, the advantage that we have is, our development company has the Hilton Hotel. And so, when we went to the brand and discussed the brands that we sent this project to, and in discussion with Hilton, because we have several Hilton Hotels in our, in our portfolio, we looked at both properties. And everybody, if the brand was not comfortable with the ability to service the hotel, they would not even entertain it. They would say, "Go back." So, I know it looks daunting when you're just looking at the massing of the building, but that's why we hire a layer of professionals that specialize, like I said, in the movement of traffic, in parking. Currently, as it, as we see it, and based on the experience that we have with the Hilton Hotel, we're actually leasing out over 100 spaces to a permanent occupant for a luxury, a vehicle, basically, vehicle storage. And that person has had an ongoing, over 100, 100 parking spaces belong to them, almost one floor plate. So, and although there may have been some, in talking to our general manager, there've been some challenges occasionally. They were able to manage those challenges by, like I said, once you get to a certain level of service, there's a certain percentage of people that will valet park, "Here, take my car." The obligation is that, you know, they don't have to wait an exorbitant amount of time. And then, a few will self-park. But in our experience, we were able to modify both properties to where, however they manage it, we've seen our hotels, every one of our hotels, I mean, from a very large resort to a very dense urban tower, where they've been able to manage it, who actually, quite frankly, one of our properties was one of our most recent acquisitions, not in this state, it was in a neighboring state. Their function and coordination of space is actually less than this. And that's a Waldorf Astoria. If you're, if you were to go to Google Earth. And given the nature of this clientele, we've never had really any complaints with that. So, that's why I think when we, when we looked at both brands and we talked about, you know, potentially Hilton, potentially Marriott, whatever that luxury brand is going to be, we showed them the campus. And then, of course, we need to substantiate that we can serve the hotel without jeopardizing those guest experiences by traffic studies. Everything that the city would require to build a project like this.
I am at, I'm at a place right now where, because there are so many unanswered questions here and issues with traffic and parking and everything, that I find it difficult to approve this, this, this project. And I, and I, I regret that, because it's, it's a, it's a great project. Is there, and I just, I'm just asking, or I'm hoping that there's a way that you can redesign and come back with a project, you know, something like this that mitigates some of the issues that, that we're talking about so far. I may be the only one that's, that's interested in these things, but it's just.
Always a valid concern, and again, that's why we've already engaged with a traffic engineer. So that this way, you know, we get approval for the massing and the design, we move into the next phase, and obviously, we would, that, a part of the criteria is an environmental impact study, as well, and that does include parking and traffic. And we've already, at this early stage, engaged an engineer to conduct that particular technical study, both counts, parking and traffic.
I think that's an important point for the council. This isn't project approval by any means. You are giving your feedback, and in fact, you have, those of you that have commented on traffic, on some of the other issues that have been called out. So, at stage one, is, it's really direction to the architect, the applicant, yeah, the massing, the scale, the site planning, it's going in the right direction, these are our concerns. So, I, I don't particularly, Councilwoman Devine, I don't want you to feel like this is an approval of the project, and I'm just not sure, because there's a lot more information that, that they will be preparing that will come forward.
Thank you.
So, I have a few comments. The first is, I think the building is, and the architecture is incredibly stunning. I don't think Glendale has seen the likes of this type of building with all the glass and the, you know, the particular narrow footprint makes it also very identifiable and, and unique. So, I, I like that very much. I mean, we have a chance to get a Waldorf Astoria in Glendale, or a Ritz Carlton in Glendale. Can you imagine the level of panache that that is going to give our downtown? Very few cities have properties of that. You know, Burbank, oh, we've got so many hotels. Pasadena, oh, we have, you know, they've got the Langham and a few others, but putting a modern-style property that will receive that high level of luxury rating, I think is, is an opportunity we really shouldn't pass up. So, for me, it only works if it's one of those high-level brands.
Correct.
Another Hilton is not going to work. I mean, it's, four-star won't work for me. It's got to be something that's absolutely going to drop people's jaws when they hear, "We're going to have a Ritz Carlton in Glendale," or a Waldorf Astoria, or a La Meridian, or one of those other top-notch brands. So, we're going to make sure, we're going to make sure, and I discuss this with our city attorney, that contingent on, on the approval is going to be one of those high-level properties. Now, that being said, I, and, so for me, it's going to pass stage one, which is the design, the massing, and the bulk. That's going to pass. But stage two, I think, is going to be tough, because I'm going to look very carefully at the parking studies and make sure that they work. And I understand the, the points you're making, that in the luxury hotel, it's going to be majority valet usage. I know that there's ways to configure parking, to get more parking available in your typical self-park, as opposed to your typical self-park platform. I think there's a lot of wasted space currently in the garage. That guy with his luxury car storage, you know, go somewhere else. That was, you know, things were good while it lasted. It's fun to look at those cars as you're self-parking, but.
I'll let you tell.
So, I don't want to say it can't be done. I can possibly envision ways in which parking can be maximized. That's up for you, I mean, that's, you and your experts to figure that out and make a presentation to us, because that perhaps is going to be one of the biggest keys to having a successful project. The, the traffic flow, as Mr. Quintero said, is very important. I know that there's, you're going to maintain the exit on the backside off of Arden as well, I presume. So, show us how that's going to work. What we don't want is a lot of queuing of the vehicles, trying to make their turn in and out. We want to avoid that, and of course, that's your internal design, and that can be oftentimes a function of how well the valet parking company manages parking. I've been at events where they handle it incredibly well, other events where you sit there and fume and say, "Why did I even come to this event?" Unite here, Chapter 11, I've been at the Hilton where they've been protesting, and then you finally reach the labor agreement with them. So, I'm hoping that Unite 11 becomes your partner, and that will also advocate for the construction of this and the development of this. Wants you to form your partnership and have your, have your discussions as to how you're going to staff it and begin that. I know that's, that's not your area, but, but just comments, and that's not before us today either. But I think your, your developer maybe knows the history of that. I think you're sophisticated in the, in the management process to take that into consideration. Those are my, those are my comments. Do we have any cards, Mr. Clerk? At any point?
I moved the item.
I'm sorry. Mr. Carpett? I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
That's okay.
This new, you know, we used to have a wider dais where I could, I could see, you know, third base and first base much easier than I.
I can't wait to see the renovation.
It's a, it's a narrow profile.
Right. Mr. Carpett?
Like, I, I agree with my colleagues on the positive notes and the, you know, constructive comments that they had. So, I mean, this is one of the projects that I believe we should have done stage one, stage two, because 99% of projects that come before council, they come two stages together. So, you design it, you find to near design, you do your studies, you bring your traffic report, and you show how the parking is done, you show how the, if everything is occupied at the same time, the maximum load, how's it going to be handled? It's very difficult with few renderings to, to give positive comments on the design. This is, this is a very large project. It will take a little bit of time to take it in and observe it. So, but as far as the parking goes, we have, most of our large events in Hilton. Hilton is a go-to place in Glendale. And sometimes you come in and there is no room in the, in the parking garage, self-park, you want a valet backed up on Glen Oaks already. If you're traveling west on Glen Oaks, try to make that left onto the parking, you know, the entrance to the, to Hilton. Good luck to you, because the east-side traffic is already backed up, queuing on Glen Oaks, and everybody's coming in. And you add another 800 to 1,000 cars to that traffic, I don't care who's doing that traffic study, it's not going to make it pencil out as to how you're going to manage that traffic. How many, you need to have enough parking spaces to even valet everybody, and that will take, we were at an event at Hilton in Beverly Hills, 1,000 people showed up, right? And how long was the valet line? It was like an hour and a half to get your car, and they have this huge queuing area that you can queue 100 cars, maybe more. So, I think this is something that needs to be really truly looked at. The design, I love this glass-tall buildings. It's my, my line, my type of buildings. I like these high-rise buildings. The other thing is, most of our high-rise buildings that are up against the property line. line in downtown area, they have very wide sidewalks. They don't have a four-foot wide sidewalk. Sidewalks are very, very wide. So when you walk around, you don't feel, you know, that imposing, you know, style of that tower standing around on top of you. And downtown is a little bit different, because the streets are maybe a little bit narrower, the sidewalks are wider. I think that needs to be looked at, and I know your restrictions on this, because you're right up against it, where you go wash and you cannot build over it. So...
Can I address that real quick? Because something that probably wasn't too, that I didn't address, is that along the ground level, we have a, we've actually, we reviewed the DSP, and we're able to comply along the ground level with the elements of the DSP, and that is, we are providing, actually enhancing the area, I like to think, because we will have a four-foot parkway that essentially goes along Bran, along Glen Oaks, in front of the tower itself, and then actually sweeps around for, up until where we, our service entrance is. We were adding a four-foot parkway along that area. And then with the DSP, what it required for our particular zone, correct me if I'm wrong, it was a six-foot wide sidewalk minimum. We're able to address the six-foot, and then now, over 90% of the tower frontage actually has no less than five to seven feet, sometimes nine feet, 10 foot worth of a landscape belt to the right against the tower. Our tower doesn't actually come back to the property line until we're 28 to 30 feet above grade, and at no point do we ever encroach on the sidewalk, it's all held back behind our property line. So when you're walking along that pedestrian level, it's something that we've had experience with. We want people to be able to walk down there without being blasted by a bunch of heat from glass, so it's been softened quite a bit.
Thank you. I have, sorry?
What's the setback?
It says four feet.
What does it add up to?
The narrowest part, which is in front of a staircase on Glen Oaks, is 10 feet, per the DSP.
But then it gets wider?
It does get wider, for a majority of the tower, actually, considerably wider.
It's 10 feet from the curb.
Correct.
Right? It's 10 feet from the curb, it's not 10 feet from the property line.
That's correct.
Yeah, it's four feet from the property line, six-foot wide sidewalk.
And the DSP was actually very clear as to how we needed to address and where those lines needed to be.
Okay, I have some questions from staff. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
I really am looking forward to have a Class A hotel. Ever since I got elected, I was looking for one. If it's a Meridian, or, you know, I agree with Mr. Mayor Najarian, that it has to be a high-end brand in order for us to try to make this work.
Wonderful.
I have, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Some questions from staff.
I have one more. Before you answer, if you can come back, Mr. Hicks, let's, before you sit down, I just have a question. Have you seen the conditions and comments that staff has given you?
Yes, we've been, we've worked...
Are you okay with those?
I don't think I've seen anything that we couldn't manage at some point.
Okay, because part of our motion is going to be, if it's approved, approving it with these conditions that staff has given you, so...
Can I take a look at that just real quick?
I hope you've seen them.
Yeah. I'd like to commit to something.
Dennis, has he seen them? Have you guys talked about them?
Okay, yes.
I'm sorry?
He's looking at them now.
Well, I hope that he's not, this isn't the first time he's seeing it, because...
No, these are all, we've talked to him. No, 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 these are discussions.
Oh, Dennis, you're such a, playing it so cagey with us. Okay, I just wanted to...
To get to this level, we've been working on this for a little, over six months now.
Okay, so you're familiar with that, and you know what we're talking about.
Correct.
Okay. Oh, Mr. Carpetian?
And as far as the ballroom goes, just a friendly suggestion, a 45-foot-wide ballroom, I don't think it would work here. This room is almost 40 feet wide, 40 foot wide. So the ballroom being 40, there has to be 100, almost 150, 160 feet.
Well, that's in just one direction, so our narrow direction would be 40 feet, and then it's divisible. I can't remember what the dimensions were.
Okay, because I thought you said it's 45 feet, and...
Well, no, just the width, not the length. There's two dimensions there, and one is over 100 feet.
Right.
I just have one more thought, and that is, hopefully, somehow in your traffic mitigation plan, et cetera, the embassy suite comes into play. That is absolutely overpart. I mean, they're just one floor after another that's empty and sort of always has been. It's not, it's physically close, but of course, not easy to get to, but it would be nice if somehow that could be used, because I think right now it's underused.
Okay, noted.
Thank you. So thank you, Mr. Hicks.
Thank you.
Mr. Carpetian?
From staff, please. So how many variants is this project asking for?
Currently, it's two DSP standards.
Which is?
Yep, and then if you consider...
Which is what?
The first one is 20-foot setback for the floor levels above the ground floor at 60 feet and above, and then the second one is a 15% floor plate reduction for portions of the building that are 200 feet and above.
Okay, so the narrowest part that is almost 35 or 40 feet, which is on the west side of the building.
That's correct, yes.
If they go up 60 feet, if they want to have a 20-foot setback, they lose almost all, half the building.
Correct, it would be a significant reduction for that.
Then if you go up another 100 feet, and then you have 15% reduction, then you end up with a restroom up there.
That's correct, sir.
It's a tough side, I'm telling you. Squeezing this building on that corner is not an easy task. Also, I saw some, you know, there's no parking, but there's bicycle storage and bicycle... Who's going to Meridian with their bicycles? Is this for the office buildings?
Maybe employees, mate.
Office buildings.
Or employees.
Yeah. I mean, when you have no parking spaces, I'm not saying not to have it, but it was interesting to see bicycle, you know, storage or parking, but no parking for cars. So, and, thank you. And the other thing is this sale of the property, I mean, I don't know how our process is, but usually, doesn't this come to closed session first, and we talk about it, and what if, what if the council comes out and says, you know, go do an RFP on this part? I mean, it's coming to this point and not have any discussion, I don't know, it's just, I wanted to understand how does this work? Usually, sell off the property, we go to closed session, we get, you know, some information, direction, and what have you, then we say, okay, we want to sell the property to this developer, or we don't want to sell it at this time, or we want to sell it because we have to sell it, and then do we want to do an RFP, or we want to just go with a, like an ENA with a developer? That would be part of this whole...
The purchase of the property was actually proposed by the developer, and so we're making you aware of it. At the same time, we're required to sell it and maximize value, that is the, that is the one entity ownership that would, that has the most, that would command the most value for the property. Because it's so small, you have, or in the way it's configured, you have to take advantage of the whole campus.
No, I understand that.
And understanding...
I'm not disputing that. I'm not saying that they're not, this is not the highest and best value for it. What I'm saying is, these items don't come to open session before we even decide what to do with the property.
And typically, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, you're absolutely correct. Councilmember Garpetian, these items would possibly come to a closed session, but based on, and the word I was going to use is configuration of this property, based on where it sits, and the ability to be able to build on it, and the request from the developer for it to come forward, those are the reasons why this was not dealt with as it usually would be, based on the normal sale of property and/or our desire to go into an ENA with a developer, or a, go into a contract with an entity. You're correct, typically, it would come to closed session, but based on, again, the way that this land is and its configuration, it wasn't done in the way that we typically do it. That's the only reason why that, that's the case.
That's the next one. So I'd like to, I don't want to rush my colleagues, but I think we've had a pretty good discussion, and points have been made forth, put forth, this is stage one design. We have another item after this, and then we have closed session, and then we're the 6 o'clock show.
What are we approving today? Approving the design? Because if stage two comes, I mean, if it comes with stage one, stage two, everything will be in one pack?
Approve the stage one design submission with the comments and conditions noted in the staff report, or deny the approval of the stage one design submission and direct redesign of the project, or approve stage one design subject to design recommendations made by the council, or anything else. So there's four choices.
Okay, so because I'm looking at the recommendations by staff, the parking is not even there. Am I correct, or am I wrong?
Well, it's not a parking issue at this point. This is stage one, this is, you know, massing.
But if I may add, I just feel that the parking is part of the design, and that's a reason I would be willing to approve alternate, alternative number three, because I feel it's part of the design. And if we don't have that now, you know, I worry about the future of this project. It's going to be a real tough road.
Yeah. The only problem I have is, well, let me defer to the city attorney.
I think, as you noted already, Mr. Mayor, there are a couple of options. At stage one, you're really just signifying that the council is okay with, is approving of the mass and scale of the project generally. You're not, it's not a project, and technically, you're not even saying this is the mass and scale that shall forever be. You're saying, as the council, we are, believe that the mass and scale is appropriate, and we want this, the next, we want the project to go into the next phase of study, which includes all the environmental, includes the parking, includes all the other issues that you've raised. So one option is to approve the motion, as you noted, Mr. Mayor, it's subject to the conditions in the staff report, and it's subject to all the comments that the individual council members have made in this meeting. So that's one option. Another option is just to have your comments stand on the record and not approve the motion. And of course, you can deny it, but that, I'm not really sure, but that's not necessary, but you can, so you can not take any action, but just have your comments stay as the comments made to the developer on the record.
So they would take those comments and implement it into their design and bring it back as a stage two?
Correct, with all, it would be stage one and stage two at that point.
I would second that.
Well, that's alternative one.
No.
No, that's alternative two, isn't it?
Two or three.
It's really...
Well, we're not saying redesign.
Well, design recommendations.
It's not taking any action, it's just having your comments stand on the record.
Yeah, I would...
So unless there's a motion made...
What you're saying is, we're not denying the mass and scale and the design of the project. We're saying that take all the comments and implement it into your design is basically the same thing, and bring it back at stage two with all the, you know...
Stage one and two.
One and two.
Just for the record...
What alternative would that be, Mr. City?
It's not one of the alternatives.
It's not one of them.
But what I would, it's for any alternative, but what I would note to Councilmember Carpetian's comments, alternative one is that, but you're doing it collectively as a council versus if you take no action, it's just your individual comments stand on the record, and they're given to the developer to go back and work on the design.
Because when you say we're approving the design...
You're not approving the mass and scale.
It all can change in stage two, because of all the, you know, maybe they want to put 100 parking somewhere, parking spaces somewhere, and we'll change the design and mass and scale of the, and you approve it today, and then you have to come back and re-prove it again. What I'm saying is, I don't know if the mass and scale is going to work, if they look into putting a parking, or maybe have a queuing in the back of the building for their valet parking. So things can change. So what I'm saying, work on the, implement the comments that we have into your design, and bring it back as a stage two, and with your, all the EIRs, and you have to do all, everything else that has to be done. I'm not saying we'll do an EIR tomorrow. Whatever has to be done, talk to Unite 11, and if you want, because that was one of the issues. But also, the brand is, that's important, but, because you have a restaurant, you have so many uses in this building with zero parking, it's, I haven't seen one anywhere. So in order to make it work...
All right, let me throw you a curveball. With the same design, what if they come back and say, we've reached a covenant with the parking structure immediately to our south, which is a huge parking structure, from 5:00 PM to 3:00 AM, and it's all signed off, and it's all, it's all done? That wouldn't affect the design of this project. We're trying to, we're talking about parking. There's different ways to solve that parking problem without changing the design of the project. I'm just saying, what if? I mean, that's, and I'm not a parking expert.
Neither am I.
But presumably, that would be a solution to their parking problem.
But at this point, we don't know that.
Well, right, so why should we make them change the design if they're able to come back?
No, we're just saying...
Someone make a motion then. I'm entertaining motions.
I made my motion.
I would like to make a motion. I don't know if it will work or not, but I will try.
All right.
I want to move the item based on staff recommendations, and to make sure that we have five-star hotel, and to see a satisfactory study on ingress and egress from the hotel, and mitigating factors for parking, whether inside the building or outside the building, those to be added to recommendation of staff.
Okay.
That's alternative number two, isn't it?
That's a good motion. Whatever we call it, that's what the motion is.
It doesn't matter, one, two, whatever.
Is there a second? There was a second.
Let me understand the motion.
Roll call.
Okay.
All right, repeat the motion.
I got that part, that incorporate all the comments from the, recommendations from staff, but how about the parking?
To make sure five-star hotel, ingress and egress to the hotel to be studied to satisfaction of these council members, and parking issues to the satisfaction to be resolved based on our satisfaction. So we are not satisfied, it's not going to go forward.
You still second it?
You understood the motion. Let me make a friendly amendment, which I believe I'm allowed to do, and that is that in addition to the ingress and egress, the two surrounding streets, Glen Oaks and Bran, that that be studied and brought back with a professional judgment from traffic engineers with a solution.
You accept that as a friendly amendment?
Yeah, that's part of the ingress and egress study.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Members of the body?
Yes.
Carpetian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Alga Janian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, Dennis. I was just kidding about you being, I don't know what I said, cagey.
He was.
Thank you for taking my comment lightly, Mayor.
He was. We won't do that again.
All right, next item, please.
Item two is director of community development regarding 145 South Central Avenue Urban Space Project, request for combined stage one and two design review and creative sign for an exterior dining installation consisting of combination of food trucks and shipping containers located on the East Early side of Glendale Galleria. Plan Galleria District Zone continued from December, sorry, mall entrance along South Central Avenue, DSP Galleria Downtown Specific Plan Galleria District Zone continued from December 3, 2019. Two A is a motion approving stage one and two design, B is a motion approving creative sign.
Ms. Beers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, as the city clerk noted, this is an item that we were supposed to hear last week, but it is before you today, and Milka Toledo, our senior planner, will take you through the presentation, and we do have a PowerPoint. Thank you, Ms. Beers.
Yes, this was on schedule last week, and I wanted to make sure that all the parties, as well as staff, had a chance to discuss the issues and point out any improvements that could be suggested to it. So I appreciate staff putting it off for a week, and...
Even before the presentation, let me say, I look on this as kind of a Waldorf Astoria of food courts and food trucks and so forth.
All right, thank you, Milka.
Sure. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I will work really quick through the presentation in the interest of time. So the project is the Glendale Galleria Urban Space Activation Project. This is a stage one, stage two design review, also included is creative sign for the project. The proposal involves the installation of the outdoor dining hall, it's approximately 2,040 square feet, which includes 10 prefabricated metal shipping containers, five permanent food trucks, seating canopy, and back of house for food prep only, with the goals and objectives to activate an existing outdoor open space adjacent to the Glendale Galleria, creating an immersive public market-like dining experience, while at the same time promoting creativity and a sense of community by supporting local business owners. This area will activate and enhance the pedestrian experience along this portion of South Central Avenue, which we... this portion of South Central Avenue, which we will learn moving forward in the presentation is one of the goals and objectives of the DSP Galleria District. The zoning, again, is DSP Galleria District. It's approximately 7,000 square feet. It's an underutilized open space at the northeast side of the mall's east entrance, west side of Central Avenue, across the street from the Americana at Brand. The site and relationship to the mall's entrance is noted on the board, and Americana at Brand, again, located across the street to the east. In terms of context, this is a view looking southwest. It's an area in the background, which is the subject site with the existing landscape planters, as well as the view looking further to the south. You will notice there's some blue umbrellas in the foreground. Again, south of those umbrellas is the main entrance to the mall, so you can see the distance between that entrance and the proposed location for the urban space. Again, just additional photos showing contacts looking west, along Central Avenue, and also across the street, looking east at the Americana at Brand. Again, this existing and proposed rendering shows the existing open space as described earlier, and the proposal showing the subject site or activated displaying containers, food trucks, and spread across the site, and also identifies the sackbacks where the containers or these food trucks will be placed directly at the property line in front, onto the 12-foot wide, excuse me, up until the front of the property line, and then onto the 12-foot wide public sidewalk adjacent to the South Central Avenue through service will be internal to the project. This was the original concept, which I believe you're familiar with, which includes the metal containers and the original colors that were originally proposed. Further design refinements have been made facing Central Avenue to soften the visibility from the street and surroundings to better relate to the Galleria and the Americana at Brand. Revisions made include to the color palette, also to the landscape, which has been incorporated to soften the corrugated metal containers, and they've also included wood cladding material. And further, more descriptive information will be presented to you in the subsequent slides. The color schemes, there are several options, or at least a couple to work with. The colors have been changed to a more warmer palette, so as identified in this Option One, the tones have been, or the color tones have been kind of toned down from its original bold colors compared, again, to the original proposal, where they have now more blue pastels, again, that warmer palette to relate better with the existing conditions. Also, additional landscaping has been introduced, as well as materials, again, with the goal of softening the view from Central Avenue. This is another color scheme, an Option Two for the council to consider, again, with blue and green hues, or again, more warmer blue with pastels to work with. And you can refer to the different color schemes in your packet, specifically pages four through seven would better identify what those colors are.
Mr. Algaianian?
Can you go back to the last one before, which one go? So you have two pictures. They're different colors. So are you asking us for which one we would suggest?
Yes. Which one the council prefers, what color scheme the council would prefer to see.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So this is a closer look, here we go, at the design revisions. The introduction, again, of the landscape or the vegetation, this allows more vertical vegetation to grow in front of the metal containers, similar to like a vertical lattice or a wood treatment as rendered, again, with the goal and objective to create a more softer look, as viewed from Central Avenue. The tower element in the background, where the creative sign would eventually be displayed, includes wood cladding to better articulate and to soften the appearance of that tall metal container. Changes to the, I think I've already addressed that, so I'm going to move along. These are just, again, closer rendering of the explanation I just provided. Changes to the containers along the facade facing Central Avenue at the center, which features a window-like element, includes more landscaping, and again, a creeping vine kind of form, and a lighting element which illuminates the evening, let me try to get to that, there we go, as rendered, and during the day, it would provide more depth to the elevation and that container. Now, lastly, in this elevation or design rendered, the northerly portion of the entrance features more wood detailed elements at strategic locations on the metal containers, again, softening the street facade. This was the original primary entrance, so this eventually would be modified with the current proposal, but this is what the original entrance that was proposed at the south end of the outdoor urban area. This tower element, again, is more of a landmark feature, and that's where the creative sign will be proposed.
Yes, Ms. Devine.
What will change in this primary entrance?
Colors, and if you recall, I mentioned that the tower, the landmark element, that would be softened with a wood cladding treatment.
I see, okay.
And landscape element.
How many entrances?
Two.
Two, right?
Exactly. Primary, yes. And I missed one, three.
Okay, the one at the very end is also an entrance.
Okay, so how does this relate to or fit in with the goals and objectives of the DSP? The Galleria District, we, the goal is to increase vitality and interest of the Galleria at street level, enliven the pedestrian experience, and as far as the downtown specific plan, to create visual interest and engaging streetscapes. It promotes permeability and visibility at the street level, and encourages design that is visually interesting, and that can be accomplished through modulated roof lines and providing a variety of color and material, and that's what this project does. Going back to modulated roof lines, which I just described, here we can see how the roof lines are modulated, where it's very nicely, appropriately breaking up that facade, as opposed to having a continuous roof line. It works with the scale of the existing building in the background, and the scale of the containers thereby creating that visual interest, which is, again, part of the goals and objectives of the DSP. And the openness, creating that transparency. The street facade shows a sense of openness with two entrances anchored at each end along Central Avenue, and a central window-like feature, which not only breaks up the facade, but it provides transparency between public and private areas. These entrances are, in addition to the main entrance to the south side adjacent to the Galleria, which features one of the creative signs where that landmark tower is proposed. This slide here will basically speaks for itself. It's the before and after. The simple corrugated metal, again, the before, and the after, the new design, which provides more human scale with elements incorporated that we discussed earlier, the wood treatment, the vertical lattice to enable the growth of vegetation, again, meeting the goals and objectives of the DSP. These slides included regarding the interior space, so I won't go into too much detail. These kind of speak for themselves. The vendors, the seating area, the food trucks, the shipping containers, of what this proposal is all about. And the creative sign. There are two creative signs for the proposed project, primary signs and secondary signs. The primary signs are located in the two areas that are illuminated. One is located above that main, or that open window seating area along the center of the project, facing Central Avenue, as described as that picture, window seating, totaling approximately 50 square feet. And then the other creative signs, these are located above the vertical storage container, which is the, excuse me, the south entry tower totaling approximately 31 square feet. These two primary creative signs provide the project's name, Urban Space Food Park. The secondary signs are non-illuminated, which are located above the southeast and northeast entries. These two signs total approximately 26 square feet, and also provide the project's name, again, but they're not illuminated. The two primary and secondary creative signs integrate with various sizes, colors, materials, and lighting effects in order to highlight each section as an individual level while providing consistency throughout, and the primary signs maximize the space and integrate throughout. And they're also provide integrating with LED lighting in order to catch the interest of visitors from a distance. And that will conclude my remarks. Yes. Does anybody, okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
No, I was just looking at you, and, no, I didn't have a question. I was just seeing if you had concluded the presentation.
I have concluded, and again, lastly, staff is requesting the approval of Stage One, Stage Two, as, or the motions you have in your staff report.
Okay, so let's go over, just since we talked about what Stage One means and what Stage Two means, what is it that we would be doing today if we were to take a vote? Mr. City Attorney. Are they going to start digging as soon as we vote for this, or not digging?
Well, no, it's Stage One, Stage Two, and the creative sign. So it's the approval, it's the land use approval. They can't, they obviously need to get building permits to do the actual construction phase. But yeah, this is the city's approval.
And it wouldn't come to us, it wouldn't necessarily come back to us for any reason? Okay, this would be, so this is our last shot at...
First and last.
Last bite at the apple, let's say. Okay. All right. I will open it up to, well, let's hear from our speaker, who's been so patiently waiting and has learned all he needs to know about architecture and hotels. Not that he doesn't know a lot about hotels. I'm sorry, Mr. Lemo, if I implied that you don't know that, but Rick Lemo.
Thank you, Mayor, council. What I know about hotels, you could put in a thimble. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Greater Downtown Glendale Association. We will always speak in favor of supporting any new businesses and anything that'll add to the business life in Glendale. We unfortunately were not included in the design process, so we were not able to weigh in on design. And so without having been with my, you know, dealt with the board, with our board to review that, we can't really speak to the design of the project, only to the fact that we always support business coming to Glendale.
Do you like the design, Mr. Lemo? Would you offer any changes to make this a better design? Let's, let me just ask.
I think that...
Let's address the...
To be perfectly honest, speaking on behalf of the Downtown Glendale Association, where we did not take a review and a stand on the design, I think it would be wrong for me to proffer an opinion on design, as I don't know what my board would approve. I'm being as honest as I can.
Hunt. That's okay. Thank you. Do they usually, does Downtown Glendale usually get involved in design, making comments, Mr. Lemo?
Typically, no, we do not. We have a public hearing, and then that's where everybody comes in and does their time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lemo.
So, but they can create similar design on their side in front of Americana.
Well, no, he's speaking as the Downtown Glendale.
I know, but I mean, in the future, since he's representing also Americana.
Okay. I'm going to just make a few comments, sort of in reverse order. The, I like the idea, I very much like the idea of having a food court in front of the Galleria in that otherwise dead space. I like the idea of reusing the containers and bringing in the food trucks, the stationary food trucks. I personally would like to see a little bit more muted colors, not necessarily the pastels. Mr. Lemo, part of my comments are for...
Sorry, a staff member left something.
Okay, so this partly, so are you listening to what I'm saying?
I could ask you a question.
Okay, because I like the use of the space. I like the use of it as a food court. I like the fact that they're using containers, reusing the whole, we've got like 6 million containers sitting in Los Angeles that haven't been shipped back to China. I would like to see more muted tones in the color palette, not so much the pastels. I'd like to see something a little more earthy, that sort of goes with the brick, because you've got that big brick.
So more earth tone colors?
More earth tone. I'd like to see more...
Brown, beige.
Yes, more beiges.
More on the lighter side?
Okers.
Olive green?
That sort of thing. To sort of pick up the...
Right. The brown facade of the Galleria, the brick facade.
I'd like to see more wood in the design that softens it up. And I understand it's trying to be an urban style, I don't want to say edgy, but more unique and, shall we say, not cosmopolitan, but contemporary, contemporary food area. So that's what I would like to see, and I'd like to see those in a design that's maybe brought back to us that we can look at, because it's a great spot. I mean, that's a very, very visible area. That's our hottest retail, that's like ground zero for retail, and anyone that comes to visit the city is either at the Americana or at the Galleria, and I think it's going to be very good. So I want to make sure that we do this as best as possible. Those are my comments.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just a point of clarification. You said to bring back the design. We're wondering, in terms of the conditions that you're suggesting, and if your colleagues agree, if the conditions are placed for the project to be able to move forward with those conditions and allow the staff to go through the approval process in terms of what the council has said, to make sure that the developer is abiding by the conditions that you've placed. But again, up to you.
It's sort of, I mean, I didn't tell you, you know, I want, I wasn't that specific with my comments, unfortunately, because I'm not a designer, so I can't give you something that's clear enough to follow, assuming council went with it, that's clear enough to follow that you would say, aha, this is what they wanted, this is what we're doing. Maybe my colleagues have something more specific.
I second it.
Yeah.
Ms. Devine?
Okay. Well, I agree with the change in the color palette, and I would go for any softer. I was okay with what you'd presented, but I'm all right with council member, or mayor's comments. I'm questioning the, your comment about the sense of openness, because I really feel that this project is, it's facing inward. Everything is inward, and there's no, I mean, this could be a real destination in that downtown with the food court and all that, but if it's facing the wall, everything is facing the wall, I don't, people are going to be going, where do we, how do we get in? And I commend them for putting in another entrance, because I know you started with, I think, two, and now we have three. However, there is, to me, no sense of openness. It's all about the wall. And I understand that urban space has a really good reputation for visual interest and creativity and food opportunities. So this could really be something special. But I would certainly like to see, instead of walling off the street, I would like to open up the street, and I think then it would be really an attractive... And I think then it would be really a, an attractive, an attraction and people would, would really want to go there.
In the question, in the form of creating more, let's say, window-like openings, like the one in the center, or just creating more general openings for the pedestrian traffic to flow in and out?
Or even have an open space where people can be sitting and enjoying the food in, in the, you know, in, in the space. And so people can actually say, well, wow, we can, we can actually go in there and eat because otherwise, you know, it's like, or are the food trucks going to be open to the street? Or they're open to the inside, aren't they?
To the inside, correct.
So it's all facing the wall. So that, that's my only comment and, and I, I don't know, I would have a hard time, again, approving this without seeing some kind of a change in, in that direction.
Thank you, Ms. Devine. Mr. Quintero.
Okay, I don't have any problem with the colors as presented, and I'm just afraid that too muted is going to make it look like what? I mean, containers are by their nature somewhat. Maybe the first plan was a bit much, but I think the second colors are fine for me. In terms of opening it up, the problem is you've got a heavily trafficked central with semis or actually unloading semis, those are the loading zones. So I think the three entrances is enough. It kind of fronts the parking lot, correct? When you look across the street, it's between.
No, it, it fronts the Forever 21 store, right across the street.
Right, and then goes, and that.
Yes.
Okay, so anyway.
I see what you're saying, it's maybe a little overlap there, yes.
Yeah, for me, the sort of indoor with the three openings is more, is more than enough. And the color's okay, whatever works out, works out. I just want to get it done as soon as possible and I hope in the long run that they don't close at 10 or whenever the Galleria closes. Hopefully the business is enough that over time it becomes, the parking structure is easy to walk to from this location and over time it becomes more than just a kind of extension of the mall.
Like the taco trucks. Why should we have to drive to Eagle Rock for a nice late night taco, you know? That's what.
Glendale Avenue, go to Azteca, they're always open late night.
Mr. Garbetti.
Oh, fair plug for Azteca on Glendale Avenue. They have great tacos. I don't know, this is something new to me. Shipping containers and Galleria, it, I don't think it just matches at all. So we're trying to build something exciting and new? I don't know. I mean, this is not that big of a place to, you know, change the dynamics of that area between Americana and Galleria. And when you look at it from across the street, you see the Rolex sign and then you see the shipping containers in the bottom that is turning its back to Central Avenue with food trucks and turning their back. I mean, this is a big wall. I know you have a couple of openings in there and you can decorate it with paint, you can decorate it with landscaping that, you know, the vines that, you know, climb up the shipping containers. But I, I don't, I don't know where, where we're going with this thing. We keep talking about the downtown specific plan and goals of downtown specific. I never, I never, I don't remember if we ever talked about having this kind of a, just plant something in there that has nothing to do with that area, the dynamics of the Galleria or, it's a, have more visitors in Galleria than, than, than Disneyland. So I, I just don't see, I don't know where we're going with this thing. I hope the goal of staff is not to keep bringing projects like this up, because I, I'm not a big fan of shipping containers being used as living spaces or, it's degrading, especially when they use it as living spaces, to me. But, and we are not responsible for 6,000 shipping containers that sit in Long Beach. I mean, let them worry about it. You know, the good days, they never remembered us, so I don't know where. But as far as the colors, I, my issue is this, this whole project, I know it has to be inward because they have everything inside, you walk in, there's food court, I mean, food places on both sides and you can sit, maybe a nice, 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 you know, ambiance. But looking at it from that area, it's this, when you consider the entire area, I don't think that this thing belongs, it's just, it looks like a, I don't know, something that, it looks like an afterthought that you plant somewhere to. I don't know if I'm expressing myself well or not, but this, I don't know where we're going with this kind of designs and stuff like that. Why can't we build something that, you know, it works, it has more opening towards central and it's somewhat the design matches the Galleria or matches, you know, the entire, you know, that side of the street. So I know it's across the street from a parking lot, but, and shipping containers will not stop the traffic. Anybody, you know, loses control and get on the sidewalk, God forbid, they're not gonna. So I don't know, I'm not, I'm not a big fan of containers and I don't know if we need to use it in here or not, especially the, the tall sign, there's a vertically, where in this city have we ever approved such a thing? I don't remember. And we went, for, for years, we went after the pylon signs, you know, to, to take them down and take them down. They changed one word on one sign, made them take them down because they lost their grandfather in rights, but I don't know, I, I, and this one, page 4.7, I know there's some changes made to it, but this is, basically speaks the truth as to where, this one right here.
Yes.
Yeah, so anyways, that's where I, I don't know, we'll see.
Okay, thank you. I, I do have a late card submitted and we'll give the speaker two minutes. Michael McGrath.
Mayor, Council. Thank you for taking the time to take a look at our proposal on the, my name is Michael McGrath, I'm the CEO of Urban Space. So I just wanted to be available to answer any of your questions and maybe answer some of the concerns that you have and explain kind of what Urban Space is and what we do. So Urban Space started in 1972 in London and it was started by a man named Eric Reynolds to build markets in London. He built some of the most popular tourist destinations in London. In the early 90s, the owner of Urban Space in the US is a man named Eldon Scott and he worked for Eric Reynolds, came to New York, started doing pop-up markets. We have the most successful pop-up markets in New York City, really in the country. Bryant Park gets something like 20 million vendors between October and January. And five years ago, we started a food hall company and the concept of the company is back to its roots, which is to promote small business. So everything we do, from the vendors that are in our markets to the contractors we use, to the designers we use, are all small business owners. And we try to create unique spaces around the country to showcase those vendors and to give the public an opportunity to gather, an interesting place to gather. One of the reasons why it focuses in and not the street is because if you see on the design, there's a central hall area in the middle where people congregate. People like to be together. And so if you, if you open this thing up and make it just, you know, a row of, of restaurants along the street, it's no different than anywhere else in any downtown in America. The idea is to create a space where people can congregate together, find interesting food opportunities, you know, give these opportunities to small businesses who would never be able to do an opportunity like this because they couldn't even get the lease, let alone the financing to do it. So we make a huge investment, five to six million dollars in a typical project. In this case, we're looking at three to three and a half million dollars we're going to spend to build this thing. And we do that so that these small businesses come in and create this space. And yeah, we make many, make money at it, absolutely. But that's what small businesses are about. They're about making money, about, you know, creating jobs and creating opportunity. So the design is focused on, you know, something interesting and edgy, something that people will walk by and see and say, well, hey, what's going on in there? I want to take a look at it. But also it's to create this sense of place so that people want to gather and, and people are interested in coming to see and coming back to. As far as hours go, you know, we can stay open as late as, as late as people are there. People are interested in being there until midnight, we'll be there. These are small business owners, they're not going to say no to being open. And so that's, that's what we are and, and who we are, but also why the design has developed. We've been working with your staff for almost a year now on this design to develop it and to put something together to be interesting. As far as colors go, we can do whatever you'd like. I'm a development guy. I don't care what color we paint the wall, just somebody make a decision. And so, you know, as far as signage, we can alter that also. We're open to your suggestions.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Quintero.
Did you do the project in Bellflower?
No, I didn't.
Yours or someone else?
Yeah, that was a different company, but it's similar content.
Not, not the Waldorf Astoria of food trucks, obviously.
No, well, we tried, we've been around almost 50 years.
Yeah, it's a very nice project that's really worked well in their downtown.
Exactly. And there's, there's a, there's a bunch of good examples that we put in the original package around California that do this kind of thing, movie nights, things like that.
Ms. Devine?
Yeah, I, I just want to say that I wasn't saying that you should open the whole length of the space. I was just saying that I, I think if you had at least one area or one space that's open to the public, then they would see what was going on and it would create some sort of excitement. I'm sorry we didn't get this designed sooner and had, you know, more chance to, to put our input. But I think if you know this Glendale community, we enjoy dining and eating out in the, out in the public, in the, with the open air. We have several restaurants that are very popular because their doors open right onto the street or their patios are right out on the street and people can go by and, and wave and, and just be out in this, this beautiful weather and enjoy our, our, our city. So I, that's why I, I'm proposing or suggesting that there be some sort of an open area that kind of introduces, like when people are coming across the street from the Americana and they look over there and they see all of these boxes and they go, oh, okay, what is, you know, okay, I don't know. I, I don't even know if I would go in, but I'm sure it's not aimed at, at my age group. But if I saw that there were people there and sitting and enjoying food and maybe, you know, drink and whatever else, I, I think would be just more, more appropriate or more kind of appealing to people. I'm not saying the whole.
No, I agree. And we, we've tried to make it an effort to put in three openings that are, you know, at least, you know, 20 feet wide to open it up, because one of the original comments we got was that there was this wall that was like 60 feet long and we agreed, absolutely. It, it definitely feels better. I agree with that.
So, Mr. Mayor, is your motion to bring it back with?
Well, we don't have any motion yet. We've made comments, I think some are, are in line with, with others, but I'm ready to entertain a motion.
Well, I'll make a motion.
Would you like, I'm sorry, we forgot Mr. Agajian.
I'll just briefly. I mean, three openings, I think it's enough. If you open to the other side, it's so close to the street, can be also dangerous. So I think what you have designed is okay and proper for this.
Thank you.
So you like it as is? I mean, as, as presented? Okay, just seeing where we're on it. Now, Mr. Quintero.
All right, so I will move that we approve stage one and two design and approve the creative sign. If the developer and staff want to come up with other color palettes, I'm like the gentleman at, I'm fine with it. Doesn't work, but I think overall the design is fine. So that's my motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there a substitute motion? If not, we'll go to the original.
Is there a substitute motion?
Yeah, I'd make a substitute motion that we, that the developer take into consideration our suggestions and come back with a redesign. Not a whole re, I don't mean a complicated, I just mean with maybe taking into consideration what our concerns are.
Encumbling all the, all the comments made by those that had.
Correct.
Comments.
Right, right, right.
Is there a second to that?
A second.
Does that motion include going back and speaking to the DGA?
Um.
Or not necessarily?
I mean, it's always a good thing.
Wouldn't hurt, it wouldn't hurt, it wouldn't hurt to talk to them and get there.
Encourage, encourage discussion with the DGA.
Absolutely, yeah.
As well as including my comments of maybe a little more muted with wood and, and all that. So was there a second on that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we're moving on to substitute motion.
Council members. Council, Councilmember Devine.
Yes.
Garbetti.
Yes.
Quintero.
No.
Agajanian.
Yes.
Aaron Agajanian.
Let's get this back soon so we can get Mr. Quintero's vote on the Waldorf Astoria of dining, dining.
Mayor and Council, we need a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
This motion, this meeting is adjourned. We have closed session?
Yes, we do. Actually, we have one item.